Zoning Board of Examiners and Appeals Public Hearing for February 10, 2022 is called to order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ellen McKay.
Here.
Dave Hale.
Here.
Jonathan Lang.
Here.
Dale Smythe.
Here.
Jackie Sabina.
Here.
Skylar Quinn.
Here.
Andrew Ramardal is excused. Do you have a quorum? Thank you.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the minutes from our last meeting, Thursday, December 9, 2021?
Move to approve.
Moved by Mr. Hale. May I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Quinn. Is there any discussion on the motion, on the minutes? Any corrections? Any objection to the minutes? Seeing none, the minutes pass. Next item, Special Order of Business or Executive Sessions. Don't believe we have any items for that.
Disclosures.
Oh, pardon me, disclosures? Are there any disclosures? One more time, any disclosures? Seeing none, move to the next item. Consent agenda. We have any objections to the consent agenda? Oh, pardon me, I need a motion to approve the consent agenda? Moved by Ms. McKay. Seconded by Mr. Smythe. Any objections to the consent agenda? Seeing none, the consent agenda passes. Next item is public hearings. First item is case 2021-0132. Will the staff please describe the notice given in this case?
Yes, Chair Lang. On January 14, 2022, a total of 245 public hearing notices were mailed in accordance with the procedures of Anchorage Municipal Code Title 21, Chapter 9, Section .030, Procedures for a Public Hearing, and in accordance with Title 21, Chapter 3, Section 20 Notice. Notice was also sent to the North Star Community Council.
Thank you. Are there any objections to the sufficiency of notice in this case? Seeing none, will the staff please present the case?
Yes, thank you. The property owners requesting this variance would like to enclose an existing carport for their duplex into a garage. The existing carport extends 2.9 feet into the required 20-foot front setback, and the petitioners plan for the garage conversion to keep the footprint of the carport and thus keep the extension into the front setback at 2.9 feet. I had listed at the time of writing the staff report the completion of the verification of nonconforming status document as a condition of approval for the variance if the board finds all eight criteria are met. However, since, since writing the staff report, this document has been completed and is part of the additional information in the supplementary packet to the case. The verification of nonconforming status establishes the legal right of the structure to remain in place because it was built in 1967 prior to current zoning. However, the petitioners need a variance to modify the carport to become a garage because enclosing the carport would increase the nonconformity, and that is not allowed under Title 21. The property owners purchased the property in 2014, and the nonconformity was discovered when they were pursuing a building permit for the carport conversion to the garage. The property owners went door-to-door on their block to explain the variance case and requested a signature from neighbors if they supported the variance being granted. Inclusive of the signatures in both the staff report and the page in the supplementary packet of information, the petitioners obtained 36 signatures from neighbors in support of granting the variance. There are no objections, objections to the granting of this variance from agencies or municipal departments. In order to approve of the variance, the board must find that the eight standards of review required by Title 21 are all met. I will briefly review the planning department's findings for the eight standards identified as letters A through H. Standard A is not met. The subject parcel is not affected by any exceptional or extraordinary physical circumstance, and it is similar to other properties in the neighborhood. Standard B is not met. The strict application of code does not create an exceptional hardship or deprive the applicant of rights commonly enjoyed by other properties. There are homes on the block that have carports without a garage. Standard C is not met. The hardship is self-imposed because the applicant could still leave the carport in place as a legal structure or modify the design such that the garage would be outside of the front setback. Standard D is met. The variance, if granted, will not adversely affect the use of adjacent property. The variance to enclose the carport will not increase its overall square footage, and 36 neighbors signed a statement of support for granting the variance. Standard E is met. The variance, if granted, will not change the character of the R2A district. The neighborhood is both homes with garages and homes with carports. Granting the variance will not permit a principal or accessory use that is not already permitted under Title 21. Standard F is met. The variance does not adversely affect public health, safety, and welfare. The traffic engineering department also commented that there is no impact to adjacent right-of-way with approval of the variance. Standard G is met. The ADA does not apply to this structure, and the standard is met. And finally, standard H, the variance would be the minimum variance possible for a reasonable use of land. The standard is met. The applicant is not proposing to increase the size of the carport and enclosing it into a garage, and a garage is a reasonable use of the land. In summary, the department finds standards D, E, F, G, and H are met, and that three standards, standards A, B, and C are not met. Therefore, the department recommends denial of the variance. However, if after this public hearing, the board finds all standards are met for granting the variance, then the approval should be subject to the following conditions as listed in the staff report. Condition one is that the approval is for a variance to allow a carport converted into a garage to extend 2.9 feet into the required 20-foot front setback. Two, a verification of nonconforming status document be completed. As I mentioned, this has been done since the staff report was written. I feel it's okay if the board leaves this in as a condition. Just, you just have extra assurance that this condition will be met by the applicant. And three, that a notice of zoning action be filed with the State of Alaska District Recorders Office. That completes my staff report. Please note that the property owners, who are also the petitioners, are in attendance tonight to provide testimony. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Appleby. Are there any questions of staff by the board? Are there any questions of staff by the petitioners? Seeing none, will the applicant or applicant's representative please come forward? And there's a button you need to press on the microphone.
Okay.
That's it. Please spell and state your name for the record.
I just want to mention something before I get started. I'm having a real hard time, a little bit hard time hearing, but the resonance from these microphones, I didn't understand too much what she said. So it may be a little bit difficult to communicate.
Can you pull the mic closer to your mouth?
Thank you. I'm going to pop this down a little bit, too.
So please spell and state your name for the record.
Did you say when I'm ready?
State your name and spell your name for the record.
State your last name.
Michael, Michael Tullius, this is my wife, Mary Tullius, T-U-L-L-I-U-S.
Thank you. You have 10 minutes to present your case.
Yes, we bought the, I'm going to repeat a little bit what Elizabeth said, or I assume she said. We bought the duplex in 2014. The plan was, is we have two daughters, and they were going to, when they moved out of our family home, they were going to move over there, and right now, one of them's there. We bought, this place was built in 1968, and I assume it got its CO in 1968. Again, we're here for the dimensional, dimensional variance. I noticed on the consent agenda that there was two cases that allowed construction setbacks that you guys approved. I didn't see them up on the board, but I assume that they were the same ones. One thing I want to point out real quick is that I canvassed the neighborhood during a pandemic and real cold weather in January and February, and everybody that we asked, my wife went with me, and my daughter sometimes switched off. Everybody we asked, they were happy to sign, sign on and say, yes, we support it, didn't have any problem with it. I also understand that there were about 250 letters that went out, and there was no return response from any of these letters that went out. I did contact, or tried to contact, left mess, voicemail messages at the North Star Community Council and said, please call me if you had any questions or concerns with the variance, because I know they were contacted. I never heard back from them, so I assume nothing happened. Also, in your packet, the, there's, all the municipal agencies responded, that they had no comment or, or approved traffic, wastewater, private development, right-of-way, had no So essentially, nobody has a problem. The community in large, in the neighborhood, has, doesn't have a problem. I want to focus a little bit on A, B, and C, because those were the ones that they turned down. First off, on A, is there any physical, physical problems? There is literally no place on the lot that I can build a garage, except under the carport. At this point, the municipality has granted me verification, you may have that in your packet, verification of nonconforming status. So the county says essentially that everything you've got, the duplex, the lot, the, the carport are okay. And there's no way I can drive around in the backyard. There is actually a hill, and I think that's why the duplex was built there. There's actually a hill that you can't shove the duplex or anything there. You can see it on your contour maps if you look at that. So there's physically no other place I can build a garage. You know, the, one of the reasons is, yes, there are carports in the area, yes, there's lots of duplexes that, when we ran around canvassing the neighbor, a lot of the, a lot of the carports, people put sides on them, and some of them put sides on them, and, and doors on it. That's where I got the idea that, gee, even my neighbor, right to the west, right to the east, put sides on their carport to keep the snow out. At this point, I can't do anything like that, because that would, that would be, that would be adding to, adding to the conflict. The big reason everybody in Alaska, I think, wants a garage, that should be the end goal of everybody. I have a garage. It's really nice. When we pulled out last night at nine o'clock, and the wind was blowing 22 miles an hour, and it was colder than heck. It's nice not to have to shovel, shovel, shovel the snow off the windows, et cetera. But the kicker isn't whether we are allowed, because we are now allowed the carport, but the kicker is, is everybody wants to upgrade the place, and like I said, my two daughters, one of them living there now, the other one's going to live as soon as the other, other lady moves out, will be living there. The reason I'm looking at a garage is specifically safety purposes. We've had bikes stolen, we've had cars broken into, and windows broken, and in a garage, you're protected. One thing I have a, for the design, I've used a structural engineer, and talking to him about the existing garage. The existing garage is stuck on six poles, and he says, essentially, when you get a snow load on the roof, you're, and have an earthquake, there's no crossmembers, there's no crossbracing, there's no strap tie-downs existing at this point, and there's no tie-downs to the sonotubes that are in the ground right now. So conceptually, that whole, the whole carport could come down and, on top of the cars that are in there, or, and mostly, I'm looking at safety, safety for my daughters, and also, once you build, build something correctly, like the design says in the packet, you know, requires a foundation, a base plate on top of the foundation bolted down, you know, it'll, it would be structurally sound and built earthquake-proof. Concerning about the hardship, there's the last, last letter on C, the hardship is, the hardship is self-imposed, because conceptually, I could build a smaller garage. Well, right now, it's a 20-foot garage, and I don't know what size your garages are, but if you take, move it in 2.9 feet, and then add eight-inch walls, you're down to 16 and a half foot garage, and that's too small for a lot of vehicles, and I wouldn't waste my time trying to build a 16 and a half foot garage. And the fact that I'm allowed to keep that post there, the front post there forever, why can't I? And I'm not trying to make the whole thing bigger. In the variance, that I understand, it mentions, as long as you, it says, as long as it's not expanded, and the way I understand, you know, went to Google, and Google says enlarged or extended, and then you go to what does enlarge mean from Google, and it's extended or expanded or inflated, or, and I'm not doing anything. I'm making it exactly the same, just put sides on it and doors and not making it one inch bigger. And if I can have the carport, why can't I have sides on the carport and make a garage out of it? I've got 22 seconds left. I work for, I'll go really fast. I worked for Chigetch Electric for 30 years, and they had a really nice encroachment agreement that allowed something like this, where you signed off on and says you make it that big, but no bigger.
All right, your time is up. Thank you very much. Are there any questions of the applicant by the board? Are there any questions of the applicant from staff?
Chair Lang, I have no questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. Could you please turn off the mic?
What am I supposed to do?
Turn off the mic.
Oh.
Thank you. Is there anyone from the public wishing to testify in case 2021-0132? Seeing no one, does the staff have any rebuttal?
I have no rebuttal. Thank you, Chair Lang.
Thank you. The public hearing is closed, and the matter rests with the board. May I have a positive motion, please? Moved by Mr. Hale? Would you state your motion, please?
Through the chair, in the case 2021-0083, to approve a variance from AMC 21.06.020B, Table 21.06-1, Table of Dimensional Standards, Residential Districts, to allow a carport converted into a garage to encroach 2.9 feet into the required 20-foot setback, subject to conditions 1 through 3, shown on page 5 of the staff report.
Thank you. Can I, can I have, Mr. Smythe has seconded. Mr. Hale, would you speak to your motion?
Thank you, through the chair. I'll start with condition B. I, I believe that it is a common right to enjoy a garage in Alaska, maybe a lot of places with carports, but I've found that it's a right commonly enjoyed by most of the people that I know that own houses and have room for garages, so I believe that that standard is met. It would be an undue hardship to not be able to, to enclose the garage. With condition C, I don't believe that it's self-imposed. The, the current owners didn't have anything to do with it. It looks like the size of the lot created issues when they placed the house, so I find that that standard is met. Condition A, finding A, is kind of the crux of this, the exceptional or physical circumstances, and the lot is small. It's not only small, it's narrow, so really, there's only so many places that you can put this house. So where they put it, happens to be where it needs to go. So there's a limitation there with the size and configuration of the lot itself, and the fact that you just can't place that garage anywhere along that front. So I think the fact that, you know, the house and the, the lot size and configuration is a extraordinary physical circumstances that does affect this, and I find that that standard is met.
Thank you. Mr. Smythe, will you speak to your second?
Yes, through the chair. I agree with Mr. Lang. I do intend to support this motion. I think, along with agreeing with the applicant's logic on the points, I think two other things for conversation that the, I appreciate the fact that they are going through the actual permit process to get this carport designed correctly, permitted correctly, and that got them here. I think the other thing for us to consider is increasing the safety of that structure dramatically with the effort that they're going through, and also, no real difference from the way that carport sits today to having walls on it in any effect to the remainder of the neighborhood. So for those reasons, I also intend to support the motion.
Thank you. Are there other, any other board members who wish to speak? Seeing none, we'll vote. And the motion is approved unanimously. Next item is the public hearing for case number 2022-0001. Will the staff please describe the notice given in this case?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On January 16, a total of 251 public hearing notices were mailed. No objections from the public or the community council were received. We did receive letters of support from the Fairview Community Council, from one of the nearest neighbors, abutting neighbors, and from an organization, American Forests. And these three letters that I'm referring to are in supplemental packets 1, 2, and 4. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any objections to the sufficiency of note in this case? Seeing none, will the staff please present the case?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would direct the board to page 39 of your packets to see a current as-built of the property. And if you're looking at the current as-built, you will see a detached garage next to East 14th Avenue, and that's showing the distance between the property line and the garage as being 6.2 feet, meaning that the garage is encroaching 3.8 feet. So this is a request for a variance from the Table of Dimensional Standards for Residential Districts in the R3 zoning district, to allow a detached garage to encroach 3.8 feet into the required 10-foot secondary front setback. The previous owner applied for and was issued a building permit to construct the garage with permit number R94-0430, but the structure wasn't built exactly according to the plot plan. The plot plan with the permit showed a 10-foot setback from the property line. The permit never obtained a final certificate of occupancy. Now, the current owner learned of the encroachment when he applied for a new building permit, R21-1799, to construct an addition to his duplex. The duplex was originally built in 1952. In regards to, oh, I wanted to point out now that the applicant provided a supplemental packet, or supplemental information, and that is in your supplementary packet number 3. Just wanted to highlight some additional information provided by the applicant in supplemental packet number 3. In regards to standard, or approval criteria A, the standard appears not to be met. There are no extraordinary physical circumstances of the subject property such as a stream, a wetland, or a slope. This is a conforming lot of 7,000 square feet. Duplexes in this R3 zoning district are required to have 6,000 square feet. The prop, the property is also served by public water and sewer. While this is a conforming lot, it should be noted that the house was built in 1952, and the location of the house on the lot, and the existing location of underground utility lines, probably did not foresee the need for a garage, when, which is commonplace now in modern times. Approval criteria B. Approval criteria B may also not be met. The physical circumstances of the subject property do not create an exceptional hardship on the property owner. However, the location of underground utility service line does constrain the location of structures. The sewer line runs underground from the duplex to the alley. No structure may be placed on top of this utility line. So either the line needs to be relocated, or the garage had to be pushed closer to the property line. And that may be the reason why the garage was moved a little bit closer to that south property line. Duplexes with detached garages are a common right of enjoyment in this district and in this particular neighborhood. It's also worth noting that no further road improvements are anticipated at this time to East 14th Avenue because the street is fully constructed and performing as intended as a local road with sidewalks. While the garage does not meet the required setback from the property line, the distance from the garage to the sidewalk is approximately 10 and 1/2 feet, which is half a foot greater than the required setback. So while it doesn't meet it from the property line, it does meet it from the constructed street, which is not likely to change. Approval criteria C may not be met. The subject property does not have a unique physical, natural or physical circumstance, condition of the property. However, the detached garage does add value to the duplex and may improve property values to other properties on this block. Also, the maximum lot coverage of 40% in the R3 district is not an issue for this property, even with the garage. The hardship appears to be self-imposed. If the garage had been built according to the approved plot plan, then there would be no encroachment. With this property, the current owner bought the house without knowing that the encroachment existed because the encroachment was created by the previous owner. Approval criteria D is met. There are no structural separation violations, no drainage does not appear to be, and runoff do not appear to be issues. There were no public comments received opposing this variance. Approval criteria E is also met. The requested variance is dimensional, not for variance for prohibited use, and the variance granting of variance would not change the character of the R3 zoning district. Approval criteria F is met. There is no identified health or safety issues with this property. There is sufficient space for road maintenance, no storage, and fire and emergency medical services. Approval criteria G is met. This is not related to ADA accessibility or reasonable accommodation. And the final approval criteria H may not be met. The property owner is seeking relief from the 10-foot secondary front setback requirement in the R3 district in order to allow an existing detached garage to remain. The variance is not the minimum variance that will make it possible for reasonable use of the land. However, five-foot setbacks from outward-facing property lines are common instances in the R3 district and on lots like this. That is because in multifamily residential areas like this, in the R3 district, the setback is cut in half when there's a third unit. So I just point out that it's very common, often, that structures are built five feet from a property line on a corner lot in the secondary front setback because of this instance where the setbacks are reduced or cut in half when a third unit is present. So the department finds that approval criteria A, B, C, and H are not substantially met and therefore must recommend denial of the variance. However, if the board finds that all eight approval criteria are substantially met, then the variance should be approved, subject to conditions 1 and 2 on page 6 of your packet. And these are standard conditions of approval, just subject to the as-built provided, there'd be no change to the property right, and that this approval will be recorded against the deed for the property. Now, page 13 of your packet begins the applicant's narrative. This is a strong application that has been very well-written and researched. That's all I have for my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McLaughlin. Are there any questions of the staff from the board? Mr. Smythe?
Maybe I missed it. Through the chair, can you help me? Why, what was the impetus of discovering the dimensional variance?
Yes, through the chair, Mr. Smythe. Thank you. The applicant last year applied for a building permit to expand his duplex, to do a home improvement addition to the 1952 house, and that is when he learned through a new as-built of the 3.8-foot encroachment into the secondary front setback. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions of staff from the board? Mr. McLaughlin, I have a question. The original building permit for the garage was 1994. Did the old code have a smaller setback? Do you recall?
It did not.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions of staff from the board? Are there any questions of the staff from the applicant? Applicant has a question. If you press the red button. There's a button on the microphone on the bottom, in the middle. That's it. Do you have questions of the staff? I need you to state your name and spell your last name for the record, please.
My name is Peter Roberts, R-O-B-E-R-T-S.
Thank you.
Through the chair to Mr. McLaughlin. Standard H states, "The variance granted is the minimum variance that will make possible a reasonable use of the land." I read this to be prospective, not retrospective, as you do. Doesn't it mean that if I were requesting an additional inch or two more than the garage's current location, the standard would not be met? But since I'm requesting no more than its existing location, the standard is met? The way you wrote your answer, it looks back. And I'm just saying that the way I read the standard, maybe the board can help me out. What am I missing with that standard?
Through the chair, Mr. Roberts. I can respond to your question, but I certainly don't want to get into a debate about the standards.
Trying to understand it.
The meaning of the standard is that, let me catch my breath. The meaning of the standard is that if the variance were not granted, you would still have a reasonable use of the land, like you could still have a home on the property. This is a residential district and a residential lot. And if the variance, if denial of the variance meant that you couldn't have a dwelling unit, couldn't have a home, then the variance should be granted. That's, and I can expand on it, but I think it'd probably be best if we just not get into a tit-for-tat on it.
Thank you. Do you have further questions of staff?
With the standard, through the chair to Mr. McLaughlin. Assuming your reading of standard H is correct, and the variance is denied as you recommend, as you know, the law allows me to build a two- or even three-story tall structure with a third dwelling unit even closer to the property line, sanctioning the garage's current location and jeopardizing the trees because the water line comes in from 14th Avenue. Are you saying that that would make possible a reasonable use of the land?
Mr. Roberts, I don't think that that's a correct characterization of the situation. You could build a third unit on, you know, on top of the garage outside of the setback, and you would have three units. You don't have to cut down any trees.
Well, to get the water line would have to be wider for an additional dwelling unit, and you'd have to like, who knows how many trees would go? Because it comes off of Latouche, and you'd have to go through all the trees. So it would be a tragedy, is what I'm trying to say. I mean, I don't want that to happen. And I think, let me ask you this. Do you agree that if that were?
Mr. Chair, point of information. I think this is the point where the applicant makes a presentation and uses their 10 minutes, and then the board asks them questions.
Thank you. I believe you're correct. Do you have other questions of the board, or would you like to present your case?
Of the board or of staff?
Excuse me, of staff.
Yeah, I do have a question for staff.
Go ahead.
Okay, so do you agree if that were to happen, denial of the variance would facilitate an absurd result that runs counter to the public interest and the goals and policies of the Fairview Neighborhood Plan? The building of a huge structure which is permitted, which I don't want to do? That would be an absurd result to deny the variance and encourage and facilitate a property owner to do such a thing. You would agree with that would be crazy, don't you?
Through the chair, Mr. Roberts. The garage encroaches into the setback, and there is a way for it not to encroach in the setback. That's to remove the encroachment or to move the garage back.
Well, there's a third remedy, though. You do agree with that, don't you? The building of a third dwelling unit, which would be counter to the public interest, to the Fairview Neighborhood Plan, and to my wishes to keep the property as a residence instead of as a money-making rental lot. I don't want that. I want to keep the trees and the historic, the home improvement project that triggered, well, I'm kind of getting into my.
Yes, if I could interrupt, this is just questions of staff.
Okay, so about the Fairview Neighborhood Plan, would you agree?
Mr. Chair, point of information. How many questions do you think that you would entertain taking?
That's a fair question. Mr. Roberts, I appreciate that you're here and what the stakes are in this situation. It seems like your questions of staff are more cross-examination court-like. You should just ask a question and get an answer, and there shouldn't be any kind of a debate, and there shouldn't really be any kind of exposition from you in rebuttal to the staff. So if you can keep your questions concise, we would appreciate that. Otherwise, we'd like to move forward with the presentation of your case.
Through the chair, Mr. McLaughlin. Did you visit the subject lot?
Mr. Chair, I think that, yes, I did, sir. But I think that the purpose of this public hearing is for the applicant to request approval of the variance and support his application in front of the board, and for the board to have a public hearing and make a motion. It's not for the applicant to put the staff on trial.
I agree. Sir, do you have specific questions about the staff report as far as how they portrayed the situation?
I think I'll move along to just my presentation. Whenever the time is right for that.
Right, you've already stated and spelled your name. You'll have 10 minutes to present your case. Please proceed.
Okay, for standard A, there are a number of unique features of my lot, which if viewed in isolation, might not satisfy the standard, but together create a unique property unlike any other in the neighborhood. Other cities and states recognize that a confluence of factors can satisfy the standard. Anchorage and Alaska should too. Staff finds that because there are no streams, wetlands, or slope, and because it is flat, my lot is not uniquely different from other lots in this neighborhood. That mechanical view fails to take stock of the fact that the general area here is urban. Fairview is not a rural area with wetlands, slopes, and streams. Wetland slopes and streams is not an exhaustive list of allowable unique criteria. The standard reads such as, but not limited to, "Trees arise out of the land. They count. Tree equity in an urban area is a concept that is, excuse me, taking root throughout the country. I reference it in my petition. Today, the record was supplemented with a letter of support from American Forests emphasizing the importance of trees, especially in an urban area. My lot has a lot of trees. I want to keep them. I do not want to build a third dwelling unit on my lot just so the garage can stay where it is. Jeff Lowenfels is Anchorage's go-to authority on gardening trees and the importance of creating green space in an urban setting. On Saturday, I emailed him my petition with photos and exhibits and staff's response. On Monday, he wrote me back." I'm reading from his email. He's out of state right now. He said, "If you want, you can read into your testimony that I wrote you. It is the best I can do. Dear Mr. Roberts, the mature trees, like the ones on your lot, would surely be an exceptional or extraordinary physical circumstance that arise from the physical conditions of the land itself, and that in the context of zoning decisions, they are just as or even more important than streams, wetlands, or slope. Good luck. I will track this." Zoning boards in other cities agree with Jeff Lowenfels and American Forests. In McGee versus Board of Zoning Appeals, City of Roanoke, the board approved a height variance because the petitioner wanted to build up rather than out in order to preserve natural vegetation and large old-growth trees. In that 2001 case, Roanoke had adopted a policy in code to preserve and protect trees. Anchorage also has such a policy. It is found in both the Comprehensive and the Fairview Neighborhood Plan. I repeatedly referenced these trees and green space in my petition and why granting the variance would preserve them. These plans are more recent and closely tailored to local needs than any court case. They should be the controlling authority of this case. Staff doesn't see it that way. Be that as it may, by acknowledging trees and green space as a special circumstance in an urban area, you will not be ignoring or even stretching the Thibodeau precedent staff cites. On the contrary, you will be applying the common sense holdings of other zoning boards and courts that comport with it. You will be valuing, as I do, trees and green space more than a third dwelling unit and the additional rental income it would provide. Even if the preservation of trees and green space, excuse me, by itself, doesn't qualify for a special enough natural circumstance to meet the standard, when they are viewed in conjunction with the lot's compatible topography with other lots on 14th Avenue, the sum total of these two factors meet the standard. Unlike most lots in the district, the topography of this and four of the five other lots on 14th Avenue between Latouche and Medford Streets are not really flat, as staff asserts. They are terraced. Concrete retaining walls coming out of the sidewalk hold back the yards on the lots that make them flat. Together, they create a consistent residential streetscape. And lest anyone forget, that is the purpose of a setback in the first place. While these walls are not a natural feature of the land, they accomplish what the code requires. That deserves weight. AMC 21.06.03(c43) states that with the measurements and exceptions for setbacks on corner lots shall be consistent with surrounding properties with more weight given to abutting properties oriented in the same pattern. Perhaps there is some technical reason why that guidance from Title 21 doesn't apply to my corner lot, but the way I read it, all things considered, it should carry some weight. Buried underground utilities behind the garage is the third element of my corner lot, which by itself might not satisfy the standard, but in combination with the other two should. Although they do not arise out of the land, there is an element of reasonableness in these matters, and because I am not motivated for maximizing profit off my lot, this element merits consideration through a less demanding lens. In sum, either by themselves or collectively, together, a rational basis exists to find that standard A has been met. Standard B. Standard A serves as a springboard for standards B and C. Staff's negative finding for B and C is premised primarily on its negative conclusion for standard A. If you find that standard A was met, B and C must follow. Here is why. When I submitted my variance application in October, I asked to have the planning department unfreeze their hold at the building department for my home improvement project. And by the way, it's only going to add, I think, like 150 square, very little amount. The whole, it's just to raise the ceilings. I have to make improvements to the roof because there's a lot of heat loss. I'm always shoveling the snow off my roof. I'm always shoveling the snow off my roof. It's going to double down on the traditional character of the house to ensure that forever this lot and this property be used as a residence and not as a rental. So I don't want to give the impression that I'm maximizing my-- that the building improvement project is to, like, make money, because it's not. It's just to make it a better place to live and make it more likely, when I'm gone, that whoever lives there uses it as a rental. So I was told that they would not issue the building permit unless-- on the home improvement project-- unless I wrote on the plot plan that I would remedy the encroachment if the variance is denied. And this is the plot plan. So I wrote, "If the submitted petition for a dimensional variance is denied, I will construct a third dwelling unit on the lot, thus instantly sanctioning the garage's current setback location with room to spare." I don't want to do that, but that's what the law allows, and so I just have no choice. The building permit was approved. Staff makes no mention of the adverse consequences of treating similarly situated lots differently, but the Fairview Neighborhood Plan does. Turning a blind eye to the consequences of denial also turns a blind eye to the Fairview Neighborhood Plan. Strict application of the code is in conflict with the Fairview Neighborhood Plan. Strict application of the code will impose an undue hardship, not just on me, but on my neighborhood and on the city as a whole. There is a significant overlap between standard B and standard E. Thankfully, staff found that I met standard E, but it used only two sentences to do so. I spent three pages on standard E, mostly by citing the Fairview Neighborhood Plan and pointing out that, in an effort to avoid repetition of past zoning mistakes, the Fairview Neighborhood Plan devised overlay districts to give the neighborhood more flexible control over zoning decisions than currently exist. My lot is in an overlay district. Many of the guidelines for my district support approval of this petition. Reduce maximization of property for occupancy without amenities for the community. Retain increased mature trees and green space in the neighborhood. Increase usable green space on each property. Minimize impacts of larger projects on their neighbors. Encourage and protect heritage properties while allowing for development and growth. Reduce the number of absentee landlords. Allow for creativity accomplishing the community's goals. The takeaway from these codified plans, policies, and guidelines is that when it comes to decisions like this one, one size does not fit all. Yet, for reasons I do not understand, planners claim their hands are tied by perplexing dogma that makes sense only to them. They want to apply the plan, but they can't. They want to recommend for approval, but they can't. Behind the scenes, they say and want one thing, but in public, they say and advocate for the opposite. There is nothing that they can overtly do to stop the absurd result of a giant structure being built even closer to the property line. Though they don't really want you to do it, staff's recommendation says that the city should cut off its nose despite its face. That is not what the residents of Fairview or the people of Anchorage want. Standard C. At its core, the issue in this standard is whether the public interest should yield to a mistake, even an innocent mistake made by someone else decades ago. Staff cites a New Jersey case from 1964, the Place case, in support of this principle. But just as it failed to do in its analysis of standards A and B, staff failed to do its homework. For standard C, that New Jersey case has been distinguished. The answer to the essential question for this standard is no. The public interest should not yield to a mistake, even an innocent mistake, made by someone else decades ago. The day before yesterday, I provided staff with case law that supports this principle, and to their credit, they promptly uploaded it to the portal for this case. I hope you have had a chance to read it. If you haven't, I could quickly read it into the record, but I only have six seconds left, so I guess I can't. Did you have a chance to read it? Okay. Can I just have a few minutes-- a minute to wrap up?
No, sir. Your time is up. Are there any questions of the applicant by the board? Are there any questions of the applicant by the staff?
No, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone from the public wishing to testify in case 2021-0001? Sir, do you wish to speak? No? Seeing none? The public hearing is closed, and the matter rests with the board. May I have a positive motion? Moved by Mr. Quinn. Will you state your motion, please?
In case 2022-0001, to approve variance from AMC Table 21.06-1, dimensional standards residential districts to allow detached garage encroached 3.8 feet into the 10-foot secondary front setback, subject to conditions 1 and 2 shown on page 6 of the staff report.
Thank you. May I have a second? Seconded in by Ms. McKay. Mr. Quinn, will you speak to your motion, please?
I'll be supporting my motion. I think that the applicant has made the case that the mature trees on the lot fit the definition of physical circumstances for finding a-- sorry, standard A. For standard B, because of these physical circumstances, the application of this code creates an exceptional or undue hardship upon the property owner. I think, just like the previous case, not being able to enjoy a garage is an undue hardship on the property owner. The alternative to that is densifying the neighborhood. And I think on standard C, the hardship is not self-imposed, as it was inherited, and it was unbeknownst to him when he bought the property. And standard H, the variance granted is the minimum variance that will make a possible reasonable use of the land. I think to be able to enjoy his garage and not take away from the neighborhood feel by having to add a third dwelling unit, because of that, I think that this is the minimum variance that will make a possibly reasonable use of the land.
Thank you. Ms. McKay, will you speak to your second?
I too will be supporting the motion for findings on standard A, trees, the fact that the lot is terraced, the location of the utilities, and also that it's a lot that has rights of way on three sides. I realize that there are three other lots in this block that have that, but with the trees and the terraces and the utilities, I agree that standard A is met. And other than that, down to H, I think it is absurd that he would have to build a third unit to leave the garage where it is. So other than that, I agree with Mr. Quinn.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the board wishing to speak? Mr. Hale?
I'd just like to say, it seems like a pretty contentious case, and I think it's just, maybe there's a lack of understanding here. It's the staff's job to strictly apply the code. That's what they do. That's what the code's for. The board is for exceptional situations. That's why you're here. So it's two different things. The staff is bound by the code. We, as a board, can make exceptions. So that's why, you know, the staff said no, because they're strictly applying the code, and you should know that. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Hale. Mr. Smythe?
Yeah, through the chair, I have to reinforce what Mr. Hale said, and I want to thank Francis McLaughlin for another excellent job in explaining the case. And he did, as mentioned before, his job in telling us what the code requires. His is not one to support or deny. It's the board's decision. If you had done the research also, if the applicant had done the research on the case, this board has never, in my time here, required an existing structure to be torn down. That was not going to be the result of this case, and never have I been in a case and actually thought different than that through the course of this because of the action of the applicant. I feel very strongly that they did a great job, and it was misconstrued throughout this application. I still intend-- I want that for the record, even though I do still intend to support this motion.
Thank you. Are there any other board members wishing to speak? Seeing none, we will vote. And the motion is approved unanimously. Congratulations, sir.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, reports. I am the chair, and I have no report. Is there a secretary's report or any committee reports? Seeing none, are there any board member comments?
Do I want what?
Board member comments?
Well, we're going to miss you, and we want you to open the little blue thing.
I saw it sitting here, but I didn't peek, so.
Peek.
Aw.
Through the chair, just to note that this is Chair Lang's last meeting on ZIBA. Thank you.
Thank you. And if I can have a moment to say something, it's been a pleasure serving with you all. I've learned a lot. And Vice Chair McKay, you were a fantastic example to follow as chair, and Laura, you've kept me out of so much trouble, so thank you for that. Mr. Quinn?
As one of the more junior members of this board, I just want to say that we look to people like you and your expertise and leadership on how to conduct ourselves on this board, so thank you.
Thank you. Can I have a motion adjourned, please?
So moved.
And we are adjourned.